Okay. I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. All rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Next is the roll call.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Present.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Mayor Protam Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
And Councilmember Woodard.
Accounted for.
That concludes roll call.
Thank you. Do we have any late changes to the agenda?
No late changes, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next is public comment. Do we have any public comment?
No one signed up in person or online to comment, and written comments were distributed to council.
Thank you very much. Okay. So next is the consent calendar. Mayor Protam Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve the consent calendar items A and B.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Consent calendar is approved. Next is the council appointment for Mayor Protam.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Councilmember Wall.
I just wanted to find out if anybody else was interested, if there's any dialogue.
Does anyone want to nominate anyone else? I don't see any hands going up. Do we need a second?
No second is required, Mayor.
Okay. Do we just vote then?
Voice vote, yes. Call on each member in turn.
Do I call on them, or does?
You should have a script in front of you that the clerk provided. The clerk does it for the mayor, but Mayor Protam and the mayor doesn't.
Okay. So I'll start over there. Oh, I see. I didn't even read it. Can I start on that side with Councilmember Murray?
Councilmember Wall.
Councilmember Ryan?
Well, I guess there's only one person nominated. So, yes.
Yeah, that's the guy I nominated. Please.
Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. Is this time to grandstand, or we just give a vote? Wall.
Councilmember Sonmore?
Councilman Wall.
Do we go to Councilmember Wall for his vote?
We have a quorum.
Oh, we have a quorum. Okay. All right. So Councilmember Wall is again our Mayor Protam. Next is the... Go ahead.
I think you all thought I was kidding, but it wasn't. So first, congratulations to Mayor Protam Wall on his fifth time being our Mayor Protam in a row. And I just want to remind this council when we come to this conversation again in a year from now, that we had spoken at least four years ago that we would use the Mayor Protam space for other council members to learn the ropes, if you will. We have willingly said no. And I will tell you, as I told you back at the summer retreat, I said no today because that's not the position that I'm interested in. But I am recognizing I am willingly giving up a window into how to do that next role. But next year, do expect some form of conversation, presuming I'm in this seat. So, excuse me for my voice breaking, but I'm a little disappointed. So, that's on me. I could have nominated myself, but I'm now on official record that I do not want to be asked, "Do I want this?", when I have said this at least now twice. So, this year is going to be a great year, as it always is. Years after that will be great, but do be advised, if someone nominates me, I will willingly proceed through whatever process, because we've never seen one in five years that will look like. So, again, congratulations. Love everybody on this council, but I think it's time that we really revisit, what are we doing up here? So, that said, thank you. Congratulations. Moving forward.
Councilmember Sonmore?
Well, Councilman Woodard, I apologize. I was looking down this way, and I thought you'd hit me. And so I apologize for that, because I was looking down here to make sure, and that's why I asked. And to tell you the truth, I... Sometimes maybe I didn't remember that in the way you said that, and so I apologize for that. And so I will remember next time.
All right. Then we're going to go on to the council assignments for boards and commissions. And do we use this?
Yes, Mayor. And our clerk is going to pull it up and put it on the screen so that people watching from home can see what we're looking at as well. So, each year, at the first meeting of council, we... Our council decides, chooses amongst themselves who will be liaison to the boards and commissions. You have in front of you a sheet. We have broken it down, green and blue. So, green is our positions, liaison positions, that the city council appoints. And blue are the positions that are appointed by outside boards, like Snohomish County Cities. There is one correction that we have in front of the sheet in front of you. The second one up from the bottom, Snohomish County City's Finance Committee. We inadvertently had that in green. That ought to be blue, so that's not something that the council designates amongst themselves. Past practice for a city council has been to select liaison assignments by seniority, and I have the seniority list as part of the memo in front of you. So with that, I would... We can go through the list, and with each council member by seniority in turn, selecting an assignment that they would like to serve for 2025.
So do I call on them, or does the clerk?
I can do it, or you can do it. Either one. You want me to do it? Okay. So for the first assignment, that is Councilmember Sonmore's selection.
I'm going to go for Left One.
Okay. For the next, that would be Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
I would go for Aha.
Okay. And the next would be Councilmember Ryan.
Arts Advisory Commission, please.
Okay. And next, Mayor Protam Wall.
Snohomish County tomorrow, Steering Committee.
Thank you. And Dr. Woodard. And Councilmember Murray?
Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission.
Thank you. And Councilmember Payne Donovan?
I would like for... Excuse me. The Seashore Transportation Forum, please.
Thank you. And back to Councilmember Sonmore?
Park and Rec.
Okay. And Mayor Matsumoto Wright?
I'll take the alternate for Seashore.
I'm sorry, alternate to?
Seashore.
Seashore. Okay. And Councilmember Ryan?
Left One Disability Board.
Thank you. And Mayor Protam Wall? Thank you. And Councilmember Woodard?
Alternate to Snohomish County tomorrow.
Thank you.
So, left, we have the Lake Ballenger-MacAllier Creek Watershed Forum. Is that my tracking correctly? Sorry, I can't see.
That looks correct. We also have the Wyre Eight Salmon Recovery Council.
Okay. I will take the Lake Ballenger-MacAllier Creek Watershed Forum, please.
Thank you. And Councilmember Payne Donovan?
And I'll stick with Wyre Eight, please.
Excuse me. Okay. So we have that. Would council like to designate alternates for any of the other committees? Oh. Is there a second required for them? Oh, alternate, yeah.
There's only one.
So we have alternates available for Seashore?
I thought I took the Seashore alternate.
Didn't you?
Yes.
You did. Sorry.
So it's Aha and Lake Ballenger.
So it looks like alternates are needed for Lake Ballenger and Aha. So I believe Councilmember Payne Donovan was the last one to select, so we just go back through the seniority list if anybody would like to serve for alternates for either one of those. Councilmember Sonmore?
I have to pass during... Due to the timing of these meetings.
Okay. Mayor Matsumoto Wright?
I'll pass, because I have a lot more meetings on top of this.
Councilmember Ryan?
Pass to the next.
Okay. Councilmember Woodard?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor Protam Wall? I'll pass as well, but I'd be willing, if nobody else fills it, to serve on Aha, Housing Affordability.
Alternative.
As an alternative. But if somebody else wants that, I'd be happy to step aside.
Councilmember Woodard?
I'll continue as the alternate for Lake Ballenger.
Okay. And Councilmember Murray?
I'm happy to be the alternate for Aha. As I say, I know the mayor will be there, so... But I'm happy to be there if he ever can't be.
Okay. So that concludes the assignments, and we will get this list formalized and out to all council members tomorrow.
Yes. Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Question for the Left One Disability Board. Do we need to take care of mayor appoints and council ratifies this evening?
For Left One?
Yeah.
This process has traditionally been used in the past for appointment to Left, but if the mayor would like to appoint the members that requested, then that's fine?
I think we just usually appoints the people who want to be on there.
Right.
Which I can do right now.
That sounds good to me.
And then council, with your approval for what is on the list here tonight, then I think we're fine.
Do we need to have the council vote?
No, I don't think so.
But no one's objecting, so.
Thank you.
Okay. So next is the review and vote on the Blue Bridge Alliance memorandum of agreement with
Good evening, Mayor Protam and city council members. So I'm here tonight for review and memorandum of the agreement with Blue Bridge Alliance. I'll go through a short background and then move to a PowerPoint, which hopefully explains what the program is about. So the Motley Terrace Police Department would like to partner with the Blue Bridge Alliance to operate a community-based program that enables officers to render on-the-spot short-term assistance to people facing an immediate critical need. Such aid could be in the form of food, shelter, clothing, fuel, auto parts and repairs, transportation, or any other means of support that would help relieve the immediate crisis. The Blue Bridge program contributes to community unity, community policing efforts. There is a $2,500 grant to cover startup costs. They also match up to $2,500 of donated funds to the program, which, with the intention of starting the program with $5,000. The Motley Terrace Police Department is dedicated to serving and protecting our community. We see firsthand the incredible dedication of our officers. We strive to make our community safer, but sometimes the challenges people face go beyond traditional law enforcement. Maybe someone loses their job, their car breaks down, or something unexpected throws them off balance. We're always working on ways to make the community safer and implementing strategies and programs to do so. There's a program that has been expanding across the state we think would be a great fit for our community, and it's called the Blue Bridge Alliance. Our police officers countless times have used their own money to help those in need. It's a powerful display of compassion that reflects the spirit of our community. The Blue Bridge enables officers to provide this kind of help through community support. Blue Bridge is an innovative nonprofit that started operating in Washington in 2022. It acts as a bridge from immediate help to longer-term assistance. The immediate help can be anything such as buying individual food, overnight lodging, bus ticket, clothes, pulling up their gas tank, buying headlights, or a baby seat for a car. These things are a small part of a bigger picture, but make a huge impact on people's lives. Our officers would be equipped with debit cards preloaded with a modest amount, but effective amount of money that would be raised from the community. This allows our community to have a stake in helping immediate assistance to those in need. Each agency has control over its own program, which would allow us to tailor it to specific needs of our community. A safer community starts with a strong partnership between the police and the community members. When the community feels connected and puts their trust in us, we work together best. Doing this and using the Blue Bridge program empowers us to make proactive solutions early to improve public safety all around. As a part of the program, officers are required to turn in a receipt and a short report on how they use the money. The funds are kept with Blue Bridge. They provide debit cards attached to our account. They also provide a tablet that keeps track of our funds. They track what is used and keep accountability and transparency to the program. There is additional grant funding through the state with Blue Bridge tracks for us. If we spend money on things like vehicle parts, such as headlights, taillights, or even helping someone get their registration for their vehicle, that money is put back into our account. We have been given an opportunity to bring Blue Bridge Alliance to Motley Terrace. A grant is available that will cover the onboarding cost of $2,500. Additionally, it will also be matched up to $2,500 of seed funds. These are the funds that will help get the program started and be used on the cards. That is a total of $5,000 in seed funds. We already have $2,500 of donated money we can use for the program through our community outreach program. From there, we would continue to rely on donated funds from the community to help run the program. We also have a specific QR code linked to our account, and then we would also have a link to the website that would go to our specific account for the community. Staff recommend city council authorize chief COA to sign the attached MOA with Blue Bridge Alliance. Any questions?
Are there any questions? Councilmember Sonmore?
I shouldn't raise my hand so fast. Well, thank you for that report, and I'm glad you're here. Of course, I'm sure it's very popular, but I just have some background questions, because I don't know about this organization. So if I could, you mentioned car repairs, and I could see maybe a car repair could be $2,500. Is there like a certain amount? Like, are we looking... I don't want to say this, because I don't want it to sound wrong. If somebody needs like $2,500 to get their car repaired immediately, then maybe it doesn't help, you know, 10 people, or it just helps the one, which obviously they need help. Is there like a certain dollar amount that you're limited to giving?
Somewhat, yes. We wouldn't be able to do a $2,500 fix, but if somebody needs a headlight or something within reason, a couple hundred dollars, we would be able to help with that. If we had somebody say that is without a home, but they need their car to be towed somewhere because it's not working, we could tow their car somewhere for them. That's within the realm of what we can do.
I know you have the QR code, but does this organization, do they actively go out to communities? Will they go out to people in our communities, or our businesses, or how do they get other...
That would be on us. If the chief signs this, that would be on us to put out there, which I'm willing to take part in.
And my last question is, can you tell us a little bit about day-to-day work? How often do you see people needing help?
That's tough. Some weeks it happens every night on a shift. Sometimes it doesn't happen for a couple weeks. And, you know, when I was on patrol or as a patrol sergeant, more than once, we'd go to, say, a domestic violence situation where there was a mom with kids that just simply didn't have any food, and we would all pull her money up together and buy food for her family. Where something like this would take care of that. It would also take care of if we needed to get them out of the house for the night, into a hotel or something, somewhere safe. We would have that available to us through this program, which honestly, we have really never had available to us before. So this is really good.
I'm sorry.
The other thing that's really exciting for me, let's say an officer stops, somebody in a traffic stop because their headlights out or their taillights out. Instead of giving them a ticket, they can surprise them and say, "Hey, why don't you meet me at the auto parts store, and I'll buy you a new headlight? I'll buy you a new taillight." Not only that good for the person that we're stopping, but it's really good for the officers too, to be able to do that for the community.
And my final question is, and thank you for doing this. It's not that I'm looking a gift horse in the mouth, but are there... I always have to ask, you know, sometimes good deeds don't go unpunished. Is there some liability issues to the city at all for...
Not that I see.
Thank you.
Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Councilmember Sonmore's questions, and so prompted me to at least share this with you, because I didn't hear your answer the way I wanted to, which is, you don't have to reinvent the wheel. Case in point, Edmunds College, they have an emergency fund. We went through a lot of time to try to whittle that down to make sure that it comes across as transparent, more importantly, fair, especially in this day and age of implicit bias. The last thing you need is another angle for people to say, "Hey, I noticed you're only given the cards two, fill in the blank." And you want to be able to refer back to, "Here's what my officers are using to make these judgment calls." At the end of the day, they're all judgment calls, right?
Correct.
But having something written is not a bad idea. And again, universities do this, community colleges do this, and I'm for sure letting you know Edmunds College Emergency Fund, they would have that listed, so forth that's worth. And you kind of get to some of these answers. You can say you can't come back in a year, or you can come back several times. There's a bunch of things you probably haven't had to think about, that theoretically speaking, you're opening yourselves up to critique. And so just trying to make sure that this stays on the positive side and not give somebody fuel to further attack the wonderful work you all are doing.
Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Commander. I think a lot of my questions have been sort of raised by the last two commentors. And I guess I'll start by acknowledging the fact that, you know, exactly as you mentioned, a lot of times, you know, you're working with folks who don't need sort of traditional police services, but are in need. And I know that, you know, I've called 911 to help folks who are in crisis or sheltered and... Or unsheltered, rather, you know, as a last resort after calling 211 and, you know, other resources I know around. So I know this is a regular thing, and I appreciate the intent here. And so I guess I'd like to raise that as a call for us to, you know, as we do often, you know, work towards more services, you know, wraparound services being available in our community, because there's not the need being met universally. And I think this is a nice opportunity, especially with the seed money, to do, you know, to help fill a need. That said, I guess my question to you, in line with the points raised by Councilmember Woodard and Sonmore, would it be possible, and hopefully not too burdensome, to get a report about sort of the equity and access? Just even just a narrative, say, in an annual or quarterly report about sort of the... What these funds are going towards? I think that would help me sort of, and community, sort of understand what... And hopefully promote giving to this program if we are to approve it. The, you know... Yeah. So could a report be generated on a regular basis?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I'd be happy to do that in our quarterly reports. And with the program they give us, they actually give me a tablet to track all this stuff. It should be pretty easy to track that and hearing back from the officers and what they're doing as well. Yeah.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commander King. Good to see you. I'm excited. I appreciate that you and the rest of the police force here in Motley Terrace are always bringing new and innovative things to us to consider and try. And, you know, I think this is another one of those, so I appreciate the opportunity. I saw, I took a look at their website and saw that there's a lot of other communities across the state that are using this program, and so I'm excited to hear about their experiences. And I think there's been good questions here about kind of how we learn about the experience, you know, as we potentially move forward with it as well. I did have a couple of questions, and one was around just data and information. So I know you talked about that they give you an iPad, and so we're providing them some level of information, including receipts. But I guess in terms of like, what information are we providing them about potential folks in our community who are receiving these services? I guess I want to make sure that we understand what's being shared and that folks who are receiving funds potentially from this understand what information is being shared about them.
Yeah. That's a good question. What we share with them is the receipt and just a short synopsis of what we use the money for. We don't give out names or dates of birth or even any information about the person. It would be, you know, we spent $150 on a taillight for somebody who couldn't afford it. Or we stopped somebody who didn't have tabs. They explained to us they just don't have a job or money to pay for tabs, so we bought their tabs for them. That's all it would be.
Super helpful. Thank you. My only other, I guess, just concern, I guess, looking over the contract, and I'm curious if we had conversation with them about this item in particular. So item number 11 talks about termination, and it says if Blue Bridge determines that agency, which is us, has operated the Blue Bridge program outside of their standards and guidelines, or in a negligent manner, that they may terminate... Blue Bridge may terminate the agreement immediately. And in such cases, all monies raised to that point will be forfeited and returned to Blue Bridge's general fund for use by other agencies. And that Blue Bridge has the sole right to determine what constitutes a violation of their standards or guidelines, as well as sole right to decide to terminate the agreement under this section. So I guess I'm a little... And again, it looks like a great organization. I looked at their, you know, like, or, you know, their staff and their board, and they look reputable. And, I mean, they're only two years old. So I guess in terms of, there's not like a lot of like historical information to look at. So in terms of kind of protecting assets, particularly if we were to start doing fundraising efforts to bring in funds to help support, you know, our local efforts, I don't think this would happen. And I never ask these questions. I know I ask lots of questions about contracts oftentimes that are worst-case scenario and things that I don't think will ever happen, but I think are important to ask, because you never know. And so I guess this worries me a little bit, that they can unilaterally decide that we have violated the terms of the agreement, and that any funds that we have raised thus far, then they get to keep as an organization. And that we don't have any recourse to... And that we don't have any recourse to appeal or have some sort of third-party arbitrator. So I guess I'm curious if there was any conversation in our, you know, discussions with them about that, and if not, if there's the possibility of going back and having some conversation about whether or not there can't be some sort of more neutral arbitration of, if there were some sort of concern about us, which again, I don't think we would ever do anything that would violate the terms of the agreement or wouldn't be, you know, that would violate their, their standards. But I guess it would be, I would love to have something that feels a little bit more, I guess, neutral if we were to ever get to that point, to ensure that we are not losing funds that our community perhaps has fundraised to support these efforts here locally.
Sure. So my understanding with that would be any kind of misconduct is what would cause that, not using the money appropriately. And with this program, there's actually a wide variety of things that we can use it for, as long as we're using it for people in the community. But this would be like if we decided to throw a party for the police department, that kind of thing.
Right.
That's what they would discontinue this for. And Hillary did look over all this and.
Yeah, maybe she can chime in. I would love to hear her thoughts there, because that's, I guess, it feels risky in terms, it feels like there is risk and not actual risk in terms of, again, I don't think we would ever do anything, nor do they seem like the type of organization that would be like, oh, we have a budget shortfall this year, we're going to look for reasons to recall some of these funds to help, you know, pay our bills. But I guess, Hillary, I'd be curious your thoughts.
Yeah, this is a very unusual contract, and a lot of other cities have signed this exact contract with this exact language. When police came to me and asked me to review it, I said, this is highly unusual, I don't love it. And I had the opportunity to mark it up, and I basically rewrote it for them, and I sent it to them, and they said, well, we don't have a lawyer, so we don't really understand what you're trying to do here. So what you're looking at is not my favorite contract. I do see areas of, that are not ideal for the city. You picked up on one. There's a couple others that I'm not terribly keen on. But on the whole, do I think the city will lose money doing this? No. Do I think they'll be able to take advantage of the city in any way? No. And I do think the more sophisticated of an organization they get, you know, at some point, they'll be able to hire a lawyer, and we can work on the contract and modify it so that all, because they're only, you know, they're only working with police organizations, and I think we all want what's best for the cities, you know. So hopefully, we can work on a better contract next year, or the year after, or the year after, when we have an opportunity to revisit this and they become a little more sophisticated. But I totally agree with you, this language is not ideal, but they did not want to revise.
Thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate that at least we asked the questions. And yeah, I guess comfortable moving forward at this point in time, and I think to Hillary's comment, I would be concerned about, you know, us going out and starting to have like an annual fundraiser to raise funds, or like those sorts of things. And I think I would want something that better protects the city's interests if we were to start, you know, I guess pushing more fundraising efforts. But I love this as a pilot, and, you know, comfortable enough given Hillary's assessment, you know, of that. So thank you, excited, you know, to see how this plays out, and appreciate, again, that all of you continue to look for ways to better serve our community. I think that's amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I like programs that help the community. Looking at the history of this, how it was founded, regarding a 2011 San Diego police officer assassinated, a response to helping out the community, and it started in Kennewick with Chief Ken Holberg, and then what they're here to do and help, and it works for the police department. So it sounds really good to me. Thank you.
Did you want to go?
Questions? My questions are a little off-base, but I don't get to see very often, so if you don't mind, just indulge me into two questions. I get asked by people where they can donate, like Kleenex, or socks, or different things like that, and I know you guys used to carry bags in your car. Do we have anything on our website that explains that to citizens if they want to donate? Because I know good and bad can come from it, right? You could have something donated that you don't need, or don't know how to get rid of, or whatever. But is, is there an opportunity for citizens to make donations to the police department to add things, like maybe somebody can't afford a big donation, but they can afford making socks, or scarves, or different things like that? Is that an opportunity for people to do?
Absolutely, it is. Probably would be good as if I came up with a list of things that would be good for a community outreach bag. Things like socks are actually really good. Toilet paper's not bad to throw their hand out. But there's some items that probably wouldn't be that great for us to carry around, so maybe I can make a list of things and get that out. Maybe we could put it out on one of our social media feeds or something.
I just had some friends learning how to knit, and I just thought maybe, you know, it'd be a nice activity for the community. All the knitters get together, and our goal is 500 scarves or something, you know, just a, a community event. Because sometimes, you know, elderly people have all these beautiful skills, but they can't bring a donation in. But if we were to pick up a donation, I think they'd feel, have that benefit of being able to donate too, because we have so many talented people in our communities. But, and then my other question is going to a different side. Recently, I saw on Facebook, and then I also had a friend tell me they called the non-emergency phone number. How fast do people get back to the, and who gets to those non-emergency phone lines?
So the police officers get back to them, and it's just, it's a matter of priority. If there's not a lot going on, it's going to be fairly quickly. But if it's a busy day, it might be a little bit. It's just the non-emergency stuff goes low on the, on the priority list as far as how it's dispatched.
Oh, so it is the same day? So if somebody called on Saturday and they were never called back?
They should get a call fairly quickly.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're pretty good at getting back to people.
Good to know.
And if for some reason, somebody doesn't get a response from us, I'd love to know.
Anyone else? Okay. Mayor Protem Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to authorize Chief Cottis to sign the detached memorandum of understanding of agreement, MOA, with Blue Bridge Alliance.
We don't need discussion on this.
You can have, you need a second first.
Second that.
Oh, I need a second. All right. Is there any discussion? If none, we'll go for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm really excited to get back to you on some information on how this is working out. I have a real good feeling about this, and I'm excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of council, just actually two items to mention tonight. First, the South County Cities Dinner is on January 16th, and that is one of your regularly scheduled council meeting nights. I do recall a conversation previously about canceling city council meetings in favor of this, the South County Cities, so I wanted to bring it up here in this forum to make sure that most everybody's going. I checked with our city clerk earlier, and there is a quorum that, of council that will be at the South County Cities Dinner meeting. So at this point, if you want to go and you haven't yet received your ticket, please contact Jennifer or myself, and we'll make sure we get that ticket purchased for you. But because a quorum will be at that, that meeting, the city council meeting for January 16th will be canceled. Secondly, the city learned yesterday morning that the Smith family, who has operated the Tour de Terrace for a number of years, 30 if I recall correctly, is retiring from doing that event. And we would like to very much thank the Smith family for all the volunteer hours and effort that they have put in over the years, and made that a great event for Mountain Lake Terrace. We're going to be evaluating options over the coming weeks to bring to council. That was Tour de Terrace, as you all know, was not a city event. It was a event run by the Smith family, and we provided support. But we're going to have to look at other alternatives for continuing that program in the future, or something similar, and we will evaluate those options and bring those to you as soon as we can. So with that, that's all I have for this evening. I hope you all had a great holiday, and now we're looking forward to get ready to accomplish a lot of good things in 2025.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to state for everyone's awareness, I will not be attending this, Soomish County Cities Dinner on the 16th. That'll be, now's a good time to say that the legislative session begins January 13th, and I'll be, my job keeps me in Olympia, a lot of that, a lot of session, which runs through the end of April this year. So, hope you all have a good dinner.
Thank you. And we're encouraging people to go to this dinner because that is voting for all the committees and such for the whole year. Anyone else? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question, sorry, Jeff, that wasn't on your list, but maybe I can throw at you because I've, I've had a couple people ask. Waste Management had sent out schedules for the year that were the wrong schedules for, you know, the wrong side of town. And so I think we have been through that before, and they sent updated schedules. Do we know if that is in the works to send out updated schedules for folks?
We will get, we will make sure those get sent out to folks. If it's not already in the works, we may, we'll get it started tomorrow. Also, a week from tonight, you will have a presentation from Waste Management. So there's an opportunity there to speak to them about that as well.
Perfect, thank you.
They sent out the wrong schedule a few years back, and then they resent it out again, the wrong schedule.
We will ask them not to do that.
That's where our money went. Anyone else? Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a couple questions. One is for Councilmember Wall. Are you in the running for some SEC positions again this year?
Yes, thanks for asking. I am submitting my name again for PSRC positions and the Soomish County Cities Executive Committee and Finance Committee.
Great. Thank you.
So I appreciate your support.
Yes, we'd like to support you on that.
Thank you.
So then, for city manager, just to confirm then, are we going to then cancel the 16th?
We are going to cancel the 16th because a quorum won't be available. The items that are currently scheduled for the 16th will move around on the schedule and make sure we update you when those items will take place.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to the city liaison reports. Shall we just start over there at the end with Councilmember Woodard?
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report, looking back, but looking forward, especially since we just canceled a meeting. Next Wednesday, the 8th, two of your council members have the opportunity to sit on a panel in Everett. I think that information's been routed to you. And then on the 19th and 20th, one of your council members for sure, has been heavily involved in organizing several Dr. Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. opportunities to get involved for the week of service. The ones that I'm mostly involved in are in Everett. Oh, I just revealed it was me. You probably had it figured out, though. None of, come on, that was funny to me. Nonetheless, a couple in Everett, and then there will be one on the 20th that morning here in Edmonds, a little bit closer to you, at the Edmonds Waterfront Center. Hope you all can get out and serve, that's, anybody listening.
All right. Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. Yep, I was going to say Happy New Year. Not much to look back on over the last couple of weeks, other than some rest and, you know, taking some time with family, which has been wonderful. I would echo, would love to have folks, so the event next Wednesday that Councilmember Woodard mentioned is being put on by Northwest Washington Civic Circle, which I will say as somebody who, my, my heart loves some nerdy civicness, is excited that we have an organization that is working to build more civic, you know, conversation here in Snohomish County and kind of in the North Sound area. And so, you know, would love to see folks there. That organization's being led by Alicia Crank, who I know a lot of us are familiar with from her work from Black in Edmonds, or from the International Women's Day event that she's put on in Edmonds. And so she is leading this effort and excited. I think one of the things I'm personally excited about is that the conversation, so it's focused on the legislative session, but it's not just talking to folks who are serving in the legislature, it's also talking to folks who are at the county and the city level, which, given that we are all serving the same constituents and navigating, you know, challenging issues that intersect, and we depend on one another in order to be able to move forward, I think it's a really neat and kind of different way than I think typically is presented. And so, you know, excited to both participate in that, but just, I'm excited that we are having those conversations, and we're talking about specifically how they're impacting, you know, folks in our area, which is cool. So with that, I just, I guess I will say thank you to the Smith family. I'll echo, you know, what the city already put out officially, and the city manager said. Tour de Terrace, I think, has, everybody has different and special, you know, kind of experiences and memories of that. But it absolutely was one of the first ways that I experienced community here in Mountain Lake Terrace. I didn't know what it was, and I just live a couple of blocks from the parade route, and I remember my first year in Mountain Lake Terrace, it was like, what is going on? And as somebody who loved seafarer parades growing up, it was super exciting to find out that we had our very own seafarers sanctioned event in Mountain Lake Terrace. And, you know, I think just learning more and more about all of the pieces of that over the years, and getting to experience that both myself, as well as with neighbors and friends and family, is just, has created a lot of special memories. So I appreciate all of the work that they've put in over the years, as well as the countless volunteers and community organizations and others who have stepped up to make that happen. And interested and excited to have the conversation to see, you know, what might be next for us as a city. So that is it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Sonmore.
Just the same, I appreciate the comments that you just made. Again, you know, Jerry Smith would be very saddened that it has stopped, but he would definitely understand why his family no longer has that time to put on Tour de Terrace. I think it's going to take some time to think about what we're going to do, and since it's in July, a lot of those contracts have to be signed early, and so there's a lot of planning that needs to go into what we can afford, or if it can be a profitable event. But I think at this time, what the note that came out from the city was fine to tell citizens about what's going on and that we're looking into it is a good idea. Also, thank you for voting on the boards and commissions. I think we will have another one coming out for the finance committee with the citizens. And LTAC, I was just trying to write, Andrew, is meeting here in a couple of weeks, just to let you know, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. In, close to the end of December of last year, I helped out with the Maverick Carers down at the Crazy Moose Casino and handed out hundreds of ham dinners for those people that signed up for, help out with their family. And then that's really it, and then it's sad that Tour de Terrace is ending. I know I've been involved with Tour de Terrace for 12, 15 years in different areas, and the last 12 being I as the parade coordinator. But things that people need to understand with something like Tour de Terrace, it's very involved and large, because you have so many different entities. You have the food area, the beer garden area, the vendors, the carnival, and if you wanted to have the car show, and then you're going to have to work with, you know, you have to have a website and people to coordinate all that with the city. So it's really a larger event than I think most people know. In fact, to get all the equipment, just to get it set up, first of all, you have to own the equipment. So maybe, you know, 1,000 chairs, 300 to 500 tables, and. chairs, 300 to 500 tables, and large circus-sized tents. You have to store them in semi-trucks. So the Smith family had two to three long semi-trucks, trailers, and then one truck. And then you have to have someone with a license that can drive it. So I mean, just getting the equipment over here and having the equipment, it's very, it, it takes a lot. So I just want to let people know that it's not real easy to put on an event like this that started so long ago, with Jerry Smith's idea, just to have a community parade. And when I got here, it was people pushing lawnmowers up the main street, riding lawnmowers. If you had a bed with wheels on it, they had beds going up the main drag. The Beer Garden was at the Catholic Church. And it was so much people going from the, the field to the Catholic Church, back and forth over the street for, for beer, that the city finally allowed and licensed beer to be allowed in the park. So that's kind of how that started. And that just kept going and going. And Jerry had some connections. He was a retired Seattle police officer. So he had some ends with having the motorcycle brigade come and open up a parade. And, and then he talked Seafare into having our Friday night parade as a practice for the next day, Saturday, torchlight parade. Unfortunately, then after COVID, then the carnival couldn't make that date, so he had to put it up another week. So then it got be, kind of not timely for Seafare. But then you have all the Seafare marshals up and down and coordinating and just had a great time. It's really nice how it started out, just a little thing, and kept going and going and large as it was. So thank everybody that helped, support, and volunteered for that. And maybe something will come up here soon. We don't know. So thank you. That's my, and my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have much to report, other than some good holiday and, and community gatherings over the last couple of weeks. Happy New Year. And I guess since we're, we're doing the Tour de Terrace commentary as well, I, you know, thanks to, to all involved that, you know, it's, it's been, you know, in my 10 years here, you know, the, one of the, the things Mount Lake Terrace is known for, but it's also something that, of course, everyone looks forward to. And I, I know that we've, we've got a lot of civic energy here. It's, it's, you know, feels like since coming out of the pandemic, we've, we've got, we've built a head of steam in a, in a lot of areas. And I, I hope with this turning of the Tour de Terrace page, there's, there's more opportunity ahead in sort of creating the, the next version of this or can, carrying on with it. So I have great faith that we'll figure something really good for community out. And I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tim Wall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And earlier today, the mayor and I met with the city manager and talked about all the exciting projects we have in front of us for the year. So just, these are exciting times. We've got a lot of amazing things the city's moving forward with, a lot of challenges too, that we're, we're going to be working on. But I'm looking forward to taking those on and working with you all to make this a very happy, healthy prosperous New Year.
Thank you. So for, for my report, basically, the only, the only meeting that I attended outside of the, the city manager's meeting is the community transit meeting today. I went to a lot of things, but it's, it, it had little to do with the city. I also want, want to thank the Smith family because I've been not really involved in, but my son has been in that parade, I don't know how many times. And, and then he even breakdanced in that parade. And he, and they would carry the linoleum and put it on the ground and breakdance and then carry music. And, and Jerry allowed it. He, he really wanted, he kept asking, are they going to do it again this year? So lots of fond memories of growing up with Tour de Terrace. And then later on, being on the city council, we're in the parade. I'm just wondering whether, when was the last time I actually sat and saw the parade from beginning to end? Because they were always in it or doing something with it. It was a lot of fun when Jerry was alive and, and he would never take no for an answer on anything. So if you say, no, we can't do that because, he goes, why not? And then he'll make it happen. So lots of memories. Hopefully, we can do something to revive whatever we can in the future. But for right now, we have memories. And this is the year of the snake. And in Japan, when you meet for the first time in the new year, you greet them by saying, "Ake mash de omedeto." So, Happy New Year. Next is new business. Does anyone have any new, new business? Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. We've actually been talking about it the whole time. I just thought we would do it in new business, which I will just say as well, how grateful I am to the Smith family, my whole family is. I think, much like you're hearing across the dais here, all of us in our own way have had our kids and our grandkids experience this. We are all experiencing the same shock you are. But really, I want to pause and make sure that the community understands, we are watching and we're listening because we're part of your community. We are your community, just as you are. So I have loved the energy around discovering the magical elves. Because that's usually how these things happen, right? You just show up, you have your great time, you go home, and you've never thought about the driver, how much time it took to get that license to be able to drive that truck to bring it over, right? Unloading, let alone the backend of all of that. So I love hearing the memories of how this stuff developed. I love hearing the inroads that people need to have. But I do want to pause and reclaim that energy and just remind you, you don't have to have any power. You did not have to be Jerry Smith. So that could be the impression you're getting right now. I gotta have power to make this happen. I gotta have chairs. The bartering system is still alive and well. There's a whole lot of ways to get people involved. So I'm really just trying to make sure, one, that the folks out there in the internet know that your council, I bet every one of us read all 100-plus on two different strands of comments, most of them in shock, I didn't even know it was a family doing that. Well, here's a chance for you to be that family. And by family, I mean Mount Lake Terrace. We put all of this pressure on one family. Folks, something we didn't tell you is, they would fly in family members from out of state to make sure that we had this experience. They don't live here. And they were that level of making sure that this community had a wonderful experience that clearly we're all learning, without realizing it, most of us, we're taking for granted. It will always be here. I genuinely was thinking about my nieces coming up this summer and figuring out, because I learned last year, you can't have anybody in the cars. Now, I don't get to do that one, but that's okay. Maybe something new will come up. But just kind of putting it out there for you out there who are thinking, I don't know what to do with all this energy, the world's going to the end, da, 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 da. Well, look at this wonderful opportunity the Smiths and universe have just handed you. You know how you can burn a lot of energy? Getting involved. I appreciate deadlines, but deadlines are just that, arbitrarily made up a line. We can extend things as need be. People understand you can do it much smaller. So before you throw your hands up or you just look to this council, I was amazed how many people thought the seven of us have that type of power. Man, I'm really impressed. Thank you. But I really don't. That said, instead of looking at the seven of us, how about we make it the 24,152, I think, last count, all of us getting involved. Again, thank you to the Smith family for being three decades of a staple experience for so many in the community. I sincerely hope that both Jerry, where he is, is smiling down, but more importantly, Judy, who was there side by side the entire time, is focusing on those positive comments, not the nonsensical people coming to their realization that they've taken for granted, all that beautiful work your family collectively has done. So let's band together as a family and get it done. And if anybody thinks I'm joking, you obviously don't know me, which is my way of saying, if somebody really does step up, I will join. What I will not do is lead at this time. But I will join. I've done too many leads. But in this particular case, if somebody really gets it moving, by all means, Councilmember Woodard's all on board. Ask anybody who's ever met him.
Anyone else? Okay. I guess the next thing on our agenda is adjournment. We're adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.